Good evening, everyone. Tonight is September 14th, 2022. It's 6:35 PM. I would like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting for the evening. Our first order will be a pledge of allegiance. Please join me if you care.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business will be the consent agenda. Would someone like to make the motion to approve it, please?
This is Janet. I move to approve the consent agendas, item 1 through 8.
Is there a second?
This is Sue, all second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any other questions or discussion?
This is Shelley. Did you get my note from somebody I sent them out to on 8/10, the city council meetings? Was that?
Yeah, you sent it around noon. Yeah, I took that down.
And it got changed?
You as well as Janet had a quick grammatical edit, but both of those were accepted.
Okay.
All set?
Yep.
Then I'll call for a vote. And remember, we're on the hybrid interactive technology format, so we'll call for a roll call vote every time.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye. So the consent agenda is approved. Moving on quickly to the letter C. Is there anyone here for public open forum?
My name is Bob Behrens. I live at 16726 West Iverson Street Northeast, and I'm here to speak in support of a compliance officer that I understand is under debate within the city council. Being on the planning commission, we go through a series of efforts to pass and clean up ordinances that have been around a while. And one of the challenges that we face is not having a compliance person in place to help accommodate the enforcement of those rules. On a personal note, I live in an area that is surrounded by neighbors to the south of me in particular who have built up trash, several cars that don't run, wrecked cars, many boxcars in the place, boats, pontoons, different things that don't run that have been stored there for years and they haven't moved. And within the last year, I've looked at selling my house, and I've had an appraiser come over. And both the realtor and the appraiser had told me that I'm not going to get the amount that I'm asking for the house because it'll be discounted by the trash in the surrounding neighbors adjacent to my house, by my house. So that's taking money out of my pocket and the ability for me to sell my house at its appropriate value. I don't want to be discounted by somebody else's lack of effort to maintain their property. So I think a compliance officer will help in that regard to visit with these people to help them understand the value of keeping their property up and to take enforcement if needed. Right now, I think that it's a complaint-driven system that we have. I have not filed a complaint formally. I have been relying on the efforts of the city to come together to put a plan in place to help run and keep our ordinances the way that we intend for them to be by having a compliance officer. So with that said, that's really all I had to say at this point.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions, anyone? Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public open forum? Then we'll move on to the planning commission report. According to my notes, it's Barb Babic who's going to present. Please keep it under 10 pages.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council and staff. And I did my best. There was three and a half hours of meetings. So, well, the commission was presented with three staff member reports and discussions. Associate Planner Frank Conan's report was regarding ordinance 22-0-1, commercial design standards. Counselor Rogers presented a PowerPoint program regarding the CI district planning study.
Excuse me, Barb. Would you pull that mic in closer?
Closer still?
Yep.
And the Assistant City Administrator Jessica Hughes continued the discussion on the residential zone moratorium. For the ordinance report, Frank used the April 6, 2022 Planning Commission meeting concerns to compile a nine-question report using background materials findings from previous discussions. And he offered final recommendations, and he is asking for a motion from the commission at the end of the discussion. Excuse me. Question number one is regarding the veneer as a masonry product, and he used information from other cities and recommended that adding language to the ordinance to explicitly exclude veneers as masonry materials. Question number two was regarding hardy board, a masonry product, and he used, excuse me, information from other cities and recommended adding language to the ordinances that explicitly excluded fiber cement as a masonry material. Question number three was regarding the 80% masonry percentage, whether or not it was too high in the freeway district. The consensus of the commission is no action is needed to change the language of the ordinance. Question number four was regarding section 7A-83. Is it sufficiently detailed to address decorative lighting? Counselor Rogers recommended adding language stating that if decorative lights exceed one-half-foot candle, they should be shaded. Question number five, does the city need to create a minimum building size standard in the freeway district? This was as a result of the Caribou kiosk or stand or shop that's approximately 700 square feet. The staff commission discussed it, and they felt that the 300 square feet per usable acre, Ms. Merzko said that it should specifically address usable acreage in the commercial, highway, community, commercial, and general commercial districts. So he didn't include the multiple-use districts. Number six, does the city need to further clarify what is permitted regarding the allowance of corporate identity design standards? And should the language explicitly direct no non-earth tone colors at 15%? The city should add language that specifically directs the type of colors that are recommended as primary colors, brown, gray, tan, amber, mahogany, terracotta, forest green, and burgundy. But the city should not add language that calls out types of colors that would be used as accent colors because it's too ambiguous. Number seven, should kiosk drive-throughs be allowed in the commercial district? And the recommendation, if approved, for 300 square foot minimum would make that question moot. And language in the ordinance should, however, address whether or not sit-down services is required for a drive-through. And then number eight, should the administrative staff be approved to change the height of security fences and/or materials after the CUP is approved? The recommendation consensus was to allow the administration to approve exchanging up to 50% between plant material size of landscape plans and changes to fence height through the building permit process. Number nine was concerning zoning ordinance chapter 7A-801, and parking may not occupy more than one-third of front yard area in all commercial industrial districts. And the recommendation there is no action is needed to the current standards are sufficient. The commission made a motion to recommend to the city council, design standard, commercial design standards 1 through 9, with the added language to number four, to propose ordinance language to create a draft ordinance and a call for a public hearing. And the consensus was unanimous. Counselor Rogers presented a PowerPoint report on the commercial industrial district regarding permitted uses and conditional uses to start a conversation on the moratorium study. Per the report, municipalities may adopt interim ordinances designed to regulate, restrict, or prohibit any use, development, or subdivision for protecting the planning process and to make well-informed decisions for the long-term welfare of the city. Further, the report states that the purpose of the CI district is to encourage the establishment of areas for general commerce and businesses in retail and hotel sales and light manufacturing. During this discussion, a handograph indicated that part of the problem is businesses planning to come into Columbus are interpreting the conditional uses in a different manner than intended. Contractor trade offices with company-owned vehicles are not meant to be used to allow large, heavy construction commercial businesses that do their business elsewhere. Congresswoman Logan has mentioned this many times, the morphing process in previous cases. If you compare the list of conditional uses allowed to the current businesses in Columbus, the original conditional uses don't coincide with what we currently have on Lake Drive. We have Semestone, we have the Aggregate Place, and a lot of non-conforming businesses. And it becomes more obvious as you look at the report information that Ms. Rogers, excuse me, provided. Behrens commented that the presence of heavy trucking businesses also contribute to the problem. And the existing non-conforming businesses also add to that confusion. Counselor Rogers suggested rezoning to light industrial, and Behrens expressed concern about the time for such a process. Administrator Merzko stated that creating two competing light industrial zones is not a good idea. Rogers suggested cleaning up the CI definitions and removing the flexibilities regarding contractor offices, and she said she would put together some recommendations for the commission and the council. Personally, I think that expanding the use of non-binding concept plans would also reduce some of the misunderstandings. The final discussion was conducted by Assistant City Administrator Jessica Hughes. The discussion focused on traffic, sites, sounds, and odors, and permitting regarding the residential home occupancies, number one, and number two. The commissioners went through the recommendations with Jessica and made a few changes. Home occupation, number one, regarding traffic on page 20, number one, should limit deliveries typical to residential areas Monday through Friday with no hours stated. And also regarding, number two, regarding deliveries, there should be no deliveries by 20,000-pound gross make vehicles. It should be limited to box trucks and panels and things where you would have Amazon deliveries and that sort of thing. On page 21 through 22, under permitting for occupational tool, the recommendation by VII requirements for inspection, number one, would remove the quote "without notice." It's never a good idea to go to somebody's house without notice, and you can't even do that in property management. You have to give people notice. You just don't show up at their door. So that verbiage should be removed. And the addition of the wording that regarding if there's imminent danger, of course, that would be allowed. The counselor recommended sticking to number two, the resident has the right to be heard. The question was if somebody doesn't comply, that you would cancel the permitted use, but she remarked that you have to do due process. You can't just deny the interim use without due process. So those are the things that I picked up on. Ella has provided me with additional minutes, so if you have any further questions on whether, like I say, there was a lot of material, so.
This is Sue. I do have a couple of questions, and it relates to the, those nine points that you talked about first.
Right. Questions that Frank had put together.
Yes. And first of all, I want to say, Frank, you did an awesome job putting the summary together. It was so easy to read. It really made it nice for me. I was at the meeting last week. I understood everything that was talked about, but when I went to read my packet and I was in a hurry, you had added, you know, each step for each question. So it really made it easy for me with the background, the question, the response from each one. So thank you, Frank.
Yep.
My question is, and I don't oppose any of the recommendations, I just wanted to kind of clarify the point on the first one about veneer. And I was on the fence, as I think some were, on if it should be, you know, included or not. I agree that a separate category would be nice, but I was trying to figure out what the purpose of making it masonry, if it is the quality, so the look, the quality, and that it's durable and it lasts a long time. If veneer looks like good quality and it's durable, then why would we not allow that? So that was just my que, you know, I don't know if anybody has an answer to that, but I just didn't see the point of what exactly our purpose is to make that change.
If it's all right, I could answer that question. Thank you, by the way, for the compliment on the report. My concern more is, and I'm sorry about the woman in the back, my concern more is that in the future, just because masonry is typically considered a building process in which stone, brick, et cetera, is laid and then put together, you know, with, in a masonry, or in a masonry way. And veneer is a slightly different process. It's a little bit more stuck on. It's usually defined a different way by building people, what I've seen online in different cities. And I just think, just, it's more of insurance than anything else of just, this is one thing, veneer, and this is another masonry. And again, the, whether we want to include that towards the masonry class, I guess we could call it class-one material or whatever, that's kind of up for debate, or we could just accept it as is. But as far as just differentiating, and same for hardy board, it's just more of making sure that in the future, there isn't that many ambiguities. And I'm sorry if that was, that was clear, if you want a little more clarity.
No, I think that was good.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I think what we're looking at is, in the big picture, in the freeway district, you have design standards, and that's what we're talking about, commercial design standards. And I think if, at the base level, you are requiring masonry-built buildings, meaning you have buildings built of block and masonry, then, and you allow veneer, and you say to them, you need to build a masonry building, and you want to put veneer on top of the masonry or the block or tip-up panels, you know, you can certainly, you can certainly do that. But I do think you have to clarify that you are not allowing veneer on stick-built buildings because that really would not meet the design standard. So I do think the clarification has to be made that if you use veneer, you're going to be putting it on top of a masonry building. Otherwise, you are going to completely change the design standards of the district, of which, in the chart, it says the buildings have to be 70% masonry. So I think that's why we were looking at the distinction of where does veneer kind of fall in? Is it the other 30% or 20% that they can put veneer on? Or is it a material that they can use in that 30%? You know, where exactly does it fall? And it doesn't really matter, it can fall into both, as just as long as they meet the initial criteria, which is 70% block-built, a block-built building.
This is Janet. I have a question about that, and I probably should have asked this question like two years ago, but when you refer to a stick-built building, do you just mean it's got a wood frame? Because almost all of them do. I mean, I have brick on my house, it's in front of a wood frame. So if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that they would need to build the whole building in block or brick as the framing structure? Is that what I'm understanding? Because most buildings aren't built that way. They're, you know, they have a block, they have a block foundation. There are some that have block structures.
Except Streetmart.
Pardon?
Streetmart, just because I live across the street, and I've been watching the walls go up, and they did not start with a frame. They're bringing in the walls in pieces.
Tip-up panels. Well, yeah, those are, yeah, and those are tip-up panels. I get that. I get that. But, you know, I mean, maybe you speak to it because you're the expert on this. I'm just, I'm really being just really puzzled about that because, you know, we have a place across the entrance into my development where that's what they do is build block buildings, and they're kind of interesting looking, but I don't see very many. I mean, you look at what's going up with Blake, that's stick, you know? And I know that that's a different, I know that that's a different zone and different requirements, but, you know, when I saw Love's going up, Love's had, you know, didn't have a block frame. It wasn't.
It's all veneer.
The Speedco is not the, not the initial building.
So technically, veneer is something that's in front, right? So a masonry veneer can be a single nonstructural external piece of masonry. So if you do a simple Google search, a veneer is masonry, if you look it up under a definition. So that masonry veneer can have an airspace behind it, and it can be technically called an anchored veneer. So in most apartment construction, that's what you're seeing, even if it's a full stacked brick, it's not attached to the building but by a mechanically anchored fastener. So they'll directly fasten to the stud or the framing member, header, whatever it is, a clip, and then they mortar in. So with the veneer, they'll put a plate on the back, they'll directly fasten a carrier, it could be called, right to the stud, and then they mortar that veneer right to that carrier. So, I mean, it's still technically masonry, so you can't call a veneer not masonry. And if you strictly just use enough veneer, a veneer could be anything. A veneer could be P-LAM on a countertop. A veneer could be wood, you know, a veneer on wood. So you really have to include the word masonry within that veneer category. So just, a veneer could be plastic. I mean.
Mr. Mayor and council, most cities that have freeway districts have provided for masonry construction in the base construction for commercial buildings. The exceptions are typically for multifamily because it's cheaper to build a multifamily building several stories high with, when they say stick-built, it's lumber or it's steel studs. But most commercial buildings are, in fact, masonry construction because the cities are after higher-value buildings. The cities are after buildings that last longer and also have, are less susceptible to being burnt down by fire. So even though they're all sprinkled, but, so I think what we have to do is, we have to have a line between, I think it's the base construction, which is, I think we're after masonry, right? Because we want all of those elements of quality and value and durability. But then, then there's a whole separate category and classification of what goes on the outside of the building, the veneer, as council member stated. So that's, but my long experience has been, cities which have sophisticated zoning ordinances, have freeway districts, have higher-end commercial districts, are after masonry construction as the base construction type.
So Bill, when you say that as a base construction type, are you talking the actual wall cavity itself being a construction masonry unit or CMU block? And then having brick tied to it?
Correct. Okay. Yep. And today, as you said, a lot of the, you know, the finish, even if it's brick, it's not, it's not structural brick. It's.
Correct. It doesn't carry any load.
Space brick.
So it's a veneer.
Right. Yeah. So, I mean, it's, I don't think it's a hard distinction to make, but I wanted to be clear that in commercial districts, they're not, other cities that have freeway districts like you do are not providing for stick-built construction other than for multifamily.
I'd like to make a comment here in that, do we want in Columbus, the standard to be something like the buildings that, like over by the prison, you've seen the construction, they're, they're all masonry, tip-up panels, whatever, that give us a good solid base and give a good face to Columbus? Or do you want them to look like what Muddy Paws was left with, with an automotive shop, which is basically in the back, a pole building? Okay? What does Columbus want? Well, to me, I want to have the masonry. I want it to look substantial. I want it to be forever. And when I was a little girl, I used to say, Daddy, talk a pig. And that was the story of the three pigs. And I don't want it out of straw, and I don't want it out of sticks. I want it out of brick. I like that.
So, I mean, I, so thank you for that clarification because that's always confused me when you refer to stick-built, which is like mostly what I see, right? But I feel like we haven't given, many of the topics that were asked of the planning commission enough consideration to fine-tune the language. And I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Shelley, but I feel like, you know, as Bill said, if we're going to exclude that in apartment complexes, I didn't hear that as one of the recommendations. So I just feel like we should really be careful about the language that we're choosing. And instead of saying we don't want veneer, I think we need to have a better definition of what we're talking about to get, to get to what Shelley's, and I, and I think most of us feel that, we have a quality, well-built, high-value building going up. And I just felt like we were taking very broad strokes with that discussion and need to get a little bit more specific about what we actually mean by that. And I just felt like we were taking very broad strokes with that discussion and need to get a little bit more specific about what we actually mean by that. Just my opinion. Oh, there's one other thing, I think it's three thousand square feet, not three hundred square feet that we were saying the minimum was, so I just.
Three thousand, yeah.
Yeah, I think you were saying three hundred, so I just wanted to make that correction.
Yeah, it's, I have it written as three thousand, so whatever I said.
Yeah, I think.
I stand corrected.
It's, it's okay, I knew you knew it was three thousand, I think it was said three hundred.
Any other questions or discussions?
Just kind of a comment, if if what we're trying to get at is a a standard brick, like a real brick, maybe we call out a brick, a full brick and mortar. As being typical, right? Like not a veneered finish that gets, you know, mortared after, it's a stackable, full-size brick, maybe we call that out in our standard.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my concern with that is that it doesn't then provide the flexibility. People will avoid putting that on the front, right? If if you if they have to do a full stackable brick as opposed to having. That be a face on on the front of a tip up building, you know what I mean?
Sure, so you're saying like an exposed aggregate.
Right, like we used to build school buildings or nursing homes out of, you know, the full.
So we had included tip up building as a masonry product, is what you're saying.
Yeah, but but then if you do that, so you don't end up with just the raw tip up, you've got to then prescribe kind of what goes on the front. You know, face brick, different types of, you know. Again, different types of veneer might be acceptable, but I this is where I think you're 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 getting there, but you're not there yet in terms of the classification. That's fair, based on the input given here tonight.
And I think that's why the planning commission, when we were talking about, and what do you do with hardy board? And and that's why I asked, is there another, a third class? You know, we said masonry, then we said glass. Other other materi, you know, we had the the other materials kind of thing and whether or not there should be another class where they can pick. They can pick a certain percentage from that, whether it's veneer, hardy board or something else. And I think what the planning commission talked about was, well, maybe it would be thirty percent and and you can include all those other things. You know, in that other category, but that you wanted, I think the planning commission indicated that they wanted to keep. And I don't remember whether it was seventy percent or eighty percent and I don't remember what districts they are because it does vary. But they wanted to keep that base percentage as masonry.
Mr. Counselor, which is what is important to the city is that it's either masonry block or tip up building. Because that increases our taxable value, no matter what they decorate the front with. I mean, the primary concern for us is income coming into the city. And so if they have to put up a tip up building or a block building. And then decorate it with half panels or whatever they want to put on it or whatever is prescribed by the city. Then we've all reached our goals. Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I and I think, you know, since I've been on in these discussions elsewhere, I know that cities. Have had challenges to the definitions, they've had interpretations when someone walks in that are different than. You know, the interpretation that the city intends. And so this is an area that I think you can you can spend a little time on and look at some of your surrounding cities like Leno Lakes, others, Blaine. To see what they did to really, you know, draw that fine line. Because in those cities where those lines are drawn, there there aren't the debates. You know, they just come in, this is what you're going to do and and they do it. And and I think by and large, if you look at what's been built in the last several years in the freeway district, they've gotten the message, right? Even even if it's not perfectly clear, the 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 message that they've gotten is this is what you're going to build. And I remember being in a few of those staff meetings. So now we have to take what what we've been telling them, you know, kind of in staff meetings and just prescribe it a little tighter in writing.
I also want to make a clarification tonight, the ordinance is not before you. What has happened is the the council gave direction to the planning commission, the planning commission has had discussion and taken that discussion. The next step would be to draft an ordinance, so we're we're, we took that extra step where we had a fair amount of discussion. We had two meetings worth of discussion. All the discussion will now Frank and Dean will now draft an ordinance and it will come back in ordinance format. And then we will have a public hearing, so we still have a couple more steps before we would adopt anything. So this is, this was just discussion to get ideas on the table so that an ordinance could be drafted.
So this is Janet, I mean, but what I would prefer is that we all agree on the language before we pay somebody to draft the ordinance and have a public hearing. Because then it's it's not, I mean, then you're having a public hearing on something that we're not necessarily all in agreement on. So I think. As Bill suggested, I mean, I just think it needs a little bit further discussion. So we can really, you know, get get the precise language that we're all comfortable with and then the the ordinance could be drafted from that. Because that's what you're going to need in the ordinance anyway.
Counselor.
Yes.
What steps do we take to move this along?
I I think you've you've given direction tonight, I I do think drafting the ordinance. But not sending it out for hearing is the next step because then you have the precise language. At least some persons, the drafter's view of what they heard is the precise language. Otherwise, you're drafting segments of an ordinance without the full ordinance. So my recommendation would be that you take the next step is to draft ordinance. But it sounds like the policymakers would like some further discussion around that before it gets noticed for hearing. So that's that's sounds like a kind of a midpoint between the two positions.
That makes sense.
Then I'll make the motion to accept the planning commission recommendations for ordinance twenty-two dash zero one. Commercial design standards as presented or with the following changes. Direct the city staff to direct the ordinance and call for a public hearing.
So I don't think that's the motion we want, based on what we just said.
But before that, we'll have discussion amongst ourselves or between the council and the planning.
Well, you should you should first get a second on the motion before you have discussion, so. Why don't you get this?
Is there a second, anybody? All right, then what would we like to do?
My recommendation, based on the discussion that you have, is that you would. Direct city staff, meaning in in this case, in this case, it would be Dean Johnson and Frank, who will draft the ordinance. And you will call for a joint meeting because I think then you would have a joint discussion between the council and planning commission. To discuss the ordinance to have a more detailed discussion about the ordinance itself. And then once you you finished that discussion, whether it's one meeting or two, and then you would call for hearing.
So moved, is there a second for that?
This is Janet, I'll second that.
Any other questions or discussions?
Yes, I think in in the motion, it's just striking and call for the hearing, right?
I didn't hear you, Bill.
I just think it's as simple as the the motion that was drafted, you just strike the words and call for the public hearing.
Well, and I don't agree with that because the the recommendations that are in our packet aren't the recommendations that we want to accept. We want to talk more about them, we want you guys to hear all the discussion that we just had and modify what the ordinance would look like, so that that's.
Okay, well, I I assume that in in the motion, but, okay.
Just to be clear.
So where are we at, we have a motion?
It's clear that you want discussion, I think that's. That is not lost on anybody.
Sorry, now you know what my parents went through.
So we have a motion and a second?
Yep.
Anybody? I'll call for.
I second it, yep.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Barb, is there anything else?
I have nothing further unless you have some questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, my only question was on the next step of the residential home business because I know you covered that. And I can't remember from the meeting what, because there were some, I think, comments and things that were reviewed that maybe.
I think we have another another meeting scheduled to go to the next step. Okay. Yep, but I I do have a question too, so is part of that ordinance also talking about the drive-through or is that a separate? Okay.
It's in, it's, it's in there and we'll, I know Frank had a had a short presentation, but we'll save it for the joint meeting.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anybody else have a question for Barb?
Thank you, Barb, that was a hard one.
Thanks, Barb.
Thank you for all the pages and pages.
Engineer report. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, Kevin Bittner, city engineer. As far as project updates, the one update I want to give is. West Freeway dri, West Freeway dot, I can't say it. West Freeway Drive is out for bids.
Yay.
We'll be taking bids, opening bids on September twenty-seventh. So we'll be bringing those bids to you for review. We're not the contracting agency, that will be the county. But the county will be looking for the city's approval of the bid before they would consider them as well. So we'll hope for good bids. While while we work on getting bids and hopefully maybe even starting construction yet this fall. We're still working through some of the environmental issues, but I think we've got thumbs up from the permitting agencies that we can. Move forward with our butternut tree issue primarily because we can protect those trees while we do some initial construction. So we can work on that permitting process over the winter because at my understanding, it'll take a few months to get through it, so. So that project is is moving forward, so we'll hope for good bids on the project, so.
When are the bids due, Kevin?
To, September twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, okay.
That's a Tuesday, so the Tuesday before the next council meeting, so. We'll hopefully have.
What happens with the butternut tree in the right of way?
Pardon me?
What happens with the butternut tree in the right of way?
So we have to go through a permitting process, we actually initially had to even apply for a permit to break a branch off the tree to send it into the DNR to verify the species. So we do have that permit now and and that tree will be sampled this week and sent in for species verification. And if the species is verified as a rare species, which is, which would be the butternut. Then then there is a process where you go through to either. Protect the tree or to take it. So and and that's the, and there's a steps you have to go through in that proceeding. And that's, that is what I understand takes several months to get through the DNR process, so.
When you say to take it, does it mean take it somewhere else or chainsaw?
Cut it down. Yeah. And we and when we were on site. With Scott Nolan of the DNR who manages the Lamprey Pass. WMA, Jim and I met him out there and and we looked at these two trees. One is far enough off the roadway that I think we can easily work around it and leave it. The other one is, they're both fairly small trees, they're maybe three-inch diameter trees. The one that's closest to the roadway, we can probably spade and move and so that might be. But even and even with spading and moving, you still have to. Do a taking permit even at that. And one of the, one of the issues with taking a tree is that you need to do mitigation, which means you have to. Find a seed tree, find another butternut that has, that's big enough to produce seed. So that you can plant other butternuts to replace the one that you're taking, so. So we may have to tromp through the forest again to see if we can find another butternut that will give us a seed stock source, so.
And what do you do once you find it? If it's already in Lamprey Pass?
If, well, if we find another butternut tree that gives us seeds, then we then we have a source where we can plant. Additional butternut trees, probably within Lamprey Pass somewhere to replace the tree or trees that we need to take out, so.
But if you transplant it?
My understanding from the DNR people is that even if we transplant the tree. It's still considered a take, it's still considered a removal, so. So I don't know, I don't know if spading it is is really a viable option, I guess the bottom line is it's it's.
But you said it was only a three-inch tree, right?
Correct.
I've spaded ten-inch trees with no problem. And. And then who takes care of grabbing the seeds from the other trees and planting them and watering them, Jim?
I think it's the mayor's duty, that and noxious weeds. I said, I think it's the mayor's duty, it goes along with with controlling those noxious weeds.
Right.
All right, anything else, Kevin?
The only other thing is, is that we had a last minute request for a letter of credit reduction again on St. Clair Lakes. So in your additions, there is a memo from me. Recommending approval of a reduction in the letter of credit for St. Clair Lakes. In the amount of a hundred thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty cents. Which would still leave a balance in the letter of credit of about ninety-three thousand.
This is Sue, I can make that motion, move to approve St. Clair Lakes line of credit reduction of. A hundred thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty eight, forty cents. From a hundred and ninety-four thousand two fifty-nine and twenty-two cents to a new line of credit of ninety-three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-two cents. Do I have a second?
This is Shelley, I'll second it.
So it's moved and seconded, any other questions or discussions?
I just have one question, so is the last remaining balance, is that after the whole thing is done or how does that, does it just keep getting mailed away?
So they're not completely done yet, they still have the bituminous work course to put on the streets yet. So that'll occur sometime next year and that's probably. Forty-five, fifty thousand dollars worth of additional work, so that that'll be another draw. And then just assuring that the project is a hundred percent complete and to our satisfaction and then we can release the balance then.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So it's been moved and seconded, I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Number twelve, attorney's report.
Just a quick tag on to the engineer's report. I'm happy to say we do have a signed purchase agreement for the right of way, so that that's in process and if with any luck, it'll close before the twenty-seventh. So that's our target, we're just working through the property owner's lender's requirements for release of that parcel, so that should go smoothly. And we appreciate the council's support of of that acquisition.
Thank you. Number thirteen.
Can I ask a question, Bill? So we, in our budget meeting, we were talking, in our EDA budget meeting, we were talking about legislative. Do you want to, is now the time to comment whether it's worth including that in our budget or not from your expert opinion of what what it looks like at the state?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I did have some discussion with the city administrator about this. It's it's my feeling after consulting with Margaret Vessel that, well, first of all, things are kind of really in flux with the the election, the fall election. But even after that, so we took two years of run at the fiscal disparities, call it mitigator. And while we thought we had a very sensible approach and we could demonstrate, you know, kind of how the dollars flowed and why we were asking for certain amounts. And the ask was very modest, we didn't feel it got a ton of traction. And if if you're going to put any money towards legislative, it would be our recommendation that we pursue a permanent source for the trans, small cities transportation funding. Because that's come up each year and I think with a little bit of a push, that could get done. Now, again, that has a statewide impact, so you know, more than Columbus, you know, more cities than Columbus should be at the table on that. So you know, there may be things like that that would be easier to accomplish because they have a broader impact. And and that would have a very immediate impact on on the bottom line for Columbus. So. So pushing the fiscal disparities, you know, mitigator or whatever you want to call it, I don't know that you want to put dollars towards that. If you do, we'll, we'll take it to the legislature and we'll give it another try, a third try. And maybe, you know, if, if things shift, there'll be more receptive ears to that. But I do think the, the fact that small cities of our size that have real transportation needs are not funded by the gas tax is something that people instantly get when you're up there. You know, that we have, we have roads like everybody else. We have people who commute into the cities and pay an extraordinary amount of gas tax by virtue of filling up their vehicles. And so people, when we sit down with them and talk to them about, they're like, oh, yeah, that, that makes sense. We need to find a permanent source. So that would be my recommendation if you want to do anything. It, it may also be simply a year to, to monitor. And, and that's something we can do kind of on an hourly basis, pretty low cost, and then say, okay, there's something moving here. Let's get in, let's get in the fray. So, so your options would be to, to bring back the fiscal disparities bill, to pursue permanent funding for gas tax, or simply just monitor what's going on.
What dollar amount are we talking about with the gas tax?
In terms of to the city or?
Yep.
The cost to the city or for?
No, what we would gain. We, we knew we were looking at with fiscal disparity, a possibility of what, $200,000, you know, you know, going forward.
Yeah, I think the last time they funded it, it, it changes every time they fund it, and they don't have a permanent source, which is, so it's kind of a moving target, but I think the last time they funded it was about $85,000. So, you know, that was one year. And then last year, this current session, 2022, there were several efforts to get a permanent source identified, but because the tax bill never got passed, it was in the tax bill and it didn't get passed. But we, we did actually lobby on that. We, we talked to the chief authors. We showed it at a couple hearings. We tracked that throughout the session, so that was actually making good headway, and it might have been a, a nice little source of revenue for the city had it passed.
The two, the two aren't mutually exclusive, though, correct? Or do you?
No.
Okay. And do you think it makes sense, since this is our preliminary levy, if we included it? And then after the elections, would you feel like you'd have a better sense of, of sort of the viability of, of moving that forward? So we could always take it out before December if it looked like this was not the year to try?
Yes, and in fact, what we could do is just, you know, like I say, on an hourly basis, we could just go have a couple meetings with folks who end up chairing those committees and say, this is, here's what our bill looked like for two years. What do you think? And we could give you that feedback, and that would be from folks who have been appointed chairs of those committees, and that would be, I think, valuable information to decide whether or not to go forward.
And is that something you would do prior to our deadline for the preliminary levy? Or sometime between that and the end of the, the calendar year?
It's really more likely end of the calendar year or even beginning, you know, in January.
Okay. So, so it might not be a bad idea to keep it in the preliminary levy, and then we can always take it out if that's the feedback that we, we get from you.
So currently, the way I have it funded is it's kind of the, we had $49,000 in reserves. And so right now, if you choose to go forward, I don't have it in the levy. I just have it using reserves.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, I, I just have a question because I feel like there's been kind of a shift. We went for two years of trying to do the fiscal disparity, and then what happened was, from what I understand, that they just didn't get to those type of, you know, business at, at that time. And meanwhile, there were other cities that were interested more than just us. I mean, they, and, and so I was kind of excited because I thought, well, you know, maybe they want to get on board, and maybe we can get a little money, you know, to back this up, too. And now I feel like you're saying, you know, this is not possible. Is that because of the political atmosphere? Or is, you know, because I, after going two years for it, and I thought the only reason was because they just didn't get to it, you know? I, I don't, I don't understand the shift.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I mean, I think that's a fair question. I, I, I think it's still possible. I just, I'm, I'm being careful. I don't want to say, let's go do it again a third time and, and not have it go anywhere. But on the other hand, if you decide that you want to get into the gas tax discussion or other discussions, it's, it's basically the same, the same cost. You know, we, we handled two or three topics last year while up at the session, including the gas tax, the tax bill, and this fiscal disparities amendment. So I'm not saying it's not possible. I just, I'm a little sheepish to say, you know, let's go for a third time and then have it be a, a third strike. But, but you're, you're absolutely correct. The reason it didn't go forward is because there was no tax bill. Now, the difference between the gas tax amendment and our amendment is we got one hearing. The gas tax amendment had multiple hearings and multiple committees, so that's how you sense whether you're moving or not. So the gas tax amendment was moving. We moved, we built a base of cities. The difference between the first year and last year is that we had a whole base of cities signing on, you know, and we could demonstrate that with decision-makers.
And we got a hearing.
And, and we got a hearing. So each, each year, we've gone a little bit further, so I'm not, I'm not saying it can't happen, but I think the prudent thing to do is spend a little bit of effort at the, you know, after the committee appointments are made to see if there's any, any life. And, and then, you know, shift to either something else or nothing at all. So I, I do think it's possible. I just, I, I'm maybe just being a little careful that we not have a, a third strike and, and, you know, look like we can't move your legislation, so.
Okay. I mean, I, I think, you answered my question. I mean, I, I feel comfortable including it and then just seeing what happens between September, end of September and December with the elections and what, a couple of your meetings.
Yep. We can do that.
Any other questions for the attorney? Then we'll move on to the mayor and city council members' report. Shelley, we'll start with you.
I have nothing tonight.
Sue?
I attended the Forest Lake Cable Commission meeting today, and we did pass the 2023 budget. And so Paul will be coming, I'm not sure when he, if it'll be in the next month, to present it to the city. But yeah, pretty much that was it for today, just going over budget and wages and things like that, so. That's all I have.
So I have a couple of things. One is the park board report, which you have a copy of. So I attended the park board meeting on, on the 8th of September, and they actually had quite a number of things on their agenda. They welcomed their newest member, Stephen Ray, who sat through the whole meeting and didn't run out with his hair afire and going, what did I sign on for? So that was good, especially since we were talking about the budget. They made a number of decisions related to the three funds that they are responsible for, and I've outlined those in the, in the report. But I'm not really asking for any action for, from you, so I'll just let you read that at your leisure. We'll talk more about it at the budget meeting we have scheduled on the 22nd. The one thing that I am asking for action on has to do with our portable toilet contract. And so that was, we received a, a, or a bid from Jimmy's Johnny's. And it went up by about 15%. So we asked Lori, the park board asked Lori to go back and see if she could get other bids. She got one additional bid submitted, and that was from.
On site.
Pardon? On site, yep. And it was even more than Jimmy's. So the recommendation of the park board is to accept the new bid from Jimmy Johnny's for the 2023 calendar year and to renew the contract with this vendor. So that, I would make a motion for the council to approve, and I can answer any questions if you, if you want.
And what is the cost for the year?
It's, they didn't bid it as a yearly cost. They bid it as a per-service cost, so, you know, however many times they, they empty out each of the toilets.
Cleaning, it's per-cleaning. It's handicapped one, regular one. It, it wasn't a, it's not a flat fee.
Right.
It's, it's per-unit, per-cleaning. And then if you have hand sanitizer, I think they actually threw that one in. I don't think there was a charge for that one. But it's à la carte, not flat fee.
I mean, I do have the bid. I can pass it around if you guys want to take a look at it, but it, yeah, it is, it doesn't, it doesn't nicely total up to, it's going to cost $10,000 or anything. And then the other bid is on the back of that, so.
So like, what, what was it last year? Hundred bucks or a thousand bucks or 10,000 bucks? Anybody have a number?
I want to say, I want to say it's either $25,000 or $2,700. I think, I think it's in that range.
Thank you.
Because I think it's, I think it's $320 a month for six months.
All right. You want to make the motion?
I did make the motion.
I'll second the motion to approve the park board recommendation to award, award the portable toilet contract to Jimmy's Johnny's for the 2023 park season. Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Thank you for the numbers, Elizabeth.
And then I just have one more thing on the park board report, and that is the RVS turf and snow proposal. So this is the contractor that has been retained for, I don't know how many years has it been, Jim? Many, right?
14.
14 years, to mow and trim the park and trap moles and get rid of weeds and do all those, drag the fields and things like that. So he came forth with a new proposal for the 2023, 2024 park session. In the past few years, we've asked for two-year contracts from him, but he's willing to do a one-year contract if that's more palatable to the, to the council. He explained that his labor costs and equipment, truck supplies costs have gone up between 15 and 20% since his last contract, and the fuel cost has gone up between 75 and 100%. So his fees obviously increased in a proportional sense. He gave us two sheets of paper, and you will see this again on the 22nd. So it was, one had to do with a, a per, per session, you know, you.
Service.
Per service, thank you, costs. So he, every time he mows the park and takes care of that, he gets X number of dollars. And the other one is kind of an à la carte, where, you know, if he does certain maintenance kinds of things, he charges by the hour for that. So there were some, there was some really good dialogue. The park board did a really great job asking questions. This vendor is more than willing to come and meet with us or add, answer questions. Again, I'm not going to look, I'm not looking for any action tonight because we'll go over it in more, in more detail at the, at the budget meeting on the 22nd. But I'm just kind of giving you a heads up that it's gonna, it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost more to have him do it. And, you know, by all accounts, the job he does is incredible. Lori was saying that she gets compliments all the time from people reserving the Ball Diamonds and having picnics in the park and things like that, like how nice our park is maintained. So he takes a lot of pride in his work and does a really good job, but his costs have gone up, and so our costs are going to go up, and we'll talk more about that on the 22nd. The other thing to mention is that Lori did present some information on the number of reservations that the park has had this year up through August. There were 300 and, I see my numbers here. Where is it, like 308 reservations for the Ball Diamonds? And they're fully booked for September and October as well. And then there was about, I think it was 15, can't remember the number. It's in here. Picnic reservations, most of those are from residents. The total revenue that's been generated from those reservations is $6,000 to date. So the park board has already decided that at an upcoming meeting, they're going to look at the fee schedule and increase the fee schedule since the maintenance of the park is going to go up in costs, and hopefully we can offset a little bit of that by increasing the fees. And when Lori's looked at the fees of surrounding neighborhoods, ours are low in comparison, so I think we're not going to get a lot of pushback on doing that. And then last but not least, they agreed that at our next park board meeting in October, they're going to kick off work with Frank on the master, park master plan. That meeting was moved from the October 13th to October 27th at 5:30. And that is the end of my park board report. If there's any other questions? And then the only other thing I just wanted to add, and it kind of tags on to what Commissioner Behrens had, had mentioned. I got a call this morning from Chris King, who's on our planning commission, and she also had some concerns about our discussion about the compliance officer, official, sorry, position. And she just wanted to share, she wanted me to share, because she couldn't be here tonight, that as a planning commissioner, and I think we would all agree that our planning commission does an incredible job. They spend tons of time doing their research. They come back with really good recommendations. They spend a lot of time, you know, coming up with conditions for the various permits that, that people are seeking. And she says it's become fairly disheartening to spend all that time and then feel like there's no way to assure that the conditions we come up with are, is really what's going to happen. And she said, so as you consider that position, consider how we on the park board feel when we spend all of that time, and then there's no ability to, or nor, nobody to enforce the conditions that we feel are important to maintain a harmonious relationship between the business and the residents, or the residents and the residents. So I told her I would share that information. That's the end of my report.
Okay. I, I had no report, but I just had a question about last night's conversation on changing the speed limits and that. I don't see it on the agenda tonight. Were we planning on pushing that to a different time?
My understanding is that Casey and Kevin would make a follow-up presentation at the next workshop meeting, which was October 11th, and then bring back additional materials that was discussed.
Okay. So we might be able to get the polls in before it freezes?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Other than that, I have no report. Thank you.
I think also we're, we have the opportunity to study it a little more because we really got that quite late. And I didn't get a chance to really, you know, delve in deep with, with the study.
Yeah, definitely. And, and question on that. Are we able to share that with the public? Because I have had many people ask, like, hey, can I get my hands on whatever that report was?
Absolutely. If it was, if it was part of an agenda packet, it's public by virtue of.
It's probably on the website already.
Those are just, we'll, we'll put it on the website.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you so much.
So everybody done? Our next workshop is on the 22nd, on a Thursday. Correct, Elizabeth?
For the, for, for the budget meeting?
Yep.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll just have to, we'll, under the, under the city administrator's report, where we can certainly do it now, I have that you would call for a meeting. We talked about it last night. We just got on a date, but you do need to call for the meeting.
So what I would like to do at that next meeting is to have more discussion on our, our new position that we're considering and the financing for it. And we can discuss more on Rob's issue of the, regarding the study, the speed study, if necessary. And we'll add that into our meeting, so eat a hearty dinner. We might be here till 10 o'clock. And does that work for you, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Yep. Everybody else?
So question on that, that meeting on the 22nd. Do we set a time on it already?
I have 6:30 here in my book.
We didn't, we didn't, we discussed it last night, but we have to call for it tonight. So last night, it was just set at the regular meeting, 6:30, but if someone wants to adjust the time, we can certainly do that because I haven't noticed it yet.
What I was, what I was wondering is it's probably going to be a lengthy meeting. If possibly, we wanted to start it earlier than 6:30. I could be here as early as 4:30.
What time can you make that?
4:30 at the earliest, probably. But that's up to everyone. I mean, we can leave it at 6:30, but I anticipate it'll be a long one.
I'm in favor of doing it earlier. I could maybe make 4:30, but for sure, 5:00. I could maybe make 4:30, but for sure, 5, or 5:30.
Shelley, how about you?
Doesn't matter to me.
Yeah?
I'm okay with either.
Elizabeth?
So 4:30?
Let's do 5 o'clock.
Five.
5:30?
Five.
5 o'clock. Well, 5 o'clock. The hearing is going.
So do we want to take care of this motion now, or wait until?
Might as well.
Okay, so then I would move to call for a 2023 City Council Special Budget Meeting on September 22nd at 5:00 PM.
I'll second that. Rob?
So it's moved and seconded. Any other questions? Then I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Next Thursday, 5 o'clock, we'll all be here. I'm next. The only thing I have to add is that today, the seniors had their lunch at the Running Aces. I saw them all toddling in, and they looked like they were expecting a good luncheon, so. I haven't talked to anybody yet, but I, I'm sure it was just fine. So, that's it. Public Works.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Assistant Administrator. I don't see her. Whoop.
Public Communications.
I'm sorry. Public Communications Coordinator Report and update on the website notification numbers.
Yeah, it was just a discussion at our last meeting, so I just wanted to make sure I provided those numbers since I had a chance. Approximately 625 total records have been created just all time since we started collecting email addresses. But only 421 of those have been validated. Emails are only sent to email addresses that are validated. That's kind of the real number we're looking at, so 421. Out of those, 421, 360 are receiving public notices, 338 are receiving city council meeting minutes, 316, planning commission meeting minutes, 175 are receiving just general city information and updates, which I believe the newsletter would probably fall under that category since that was the reason this discussion came up. 111 are receiving notification about community events, 90, council corner mayor's messages, 85 are receiving opinion surveys, 68 are receiving volunteer opportunities, 48 committee and board opportunities, and 42 are receiving employment opportunities. And just one little tidbit as well, as for records received this calendar year, 29 have been validated, 14 were received between New Year's Day and May 31st, leaving the remaining 15 to be received since June 1st, which is a little bit before the hard copy newsletter was mailed out this year. So there's all the numbers, you can do with them as you please.
Thank you.
What was the 68?
The 68 was volunteer opportunities. And I can send these over in an email to you guys if you would like to just have them in your back pocket. One other note is.
I do have one other question. I guess I wasn't listening the first time around very well. 68, you got 68, was it hits on the volunteer opportunity application?
Right, these are 68 total that we have just in our list that have signed up for volunteer opportunity notifications.
So they're the emails that we collected, Sue?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just all time.
The electronic.
Not 68 people looking to volunteer?
No, 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 unfortunately not. Simply 68 are signed up for notifications for the opportunity to volunteer.
Well, let's start sending those out.
Frequently, every day.
Okay, thanks for that.
One other note, since it was also asked by Councilmember Bush, the speed study is available on the website. It's in our, it's under agendas for the city council. It was listed as a draft for the 9/13 workshop, so.
Thank you.
That is public. Yep.
Thank you, Connor. City Administrator.
I have no report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
What? What? All right. Well, then we're kind of winding down to the end of our page here. Onto letter E. The planning commission meetings are, or will be, September 21st at 6:30. City council meeting will be the 28th at 6:30. How can it be the end of September already?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just wanted to let you know, the planning commission, during the planning commission meeting, we have two applications. One is a dog kennel interim use permit. We have a variance for a setback for garage. And also, you'll have a discussion for the residential zone business. Jessica has her fifth segment on that discussion. And also, Megan Rogers will have her second discussion on the CI district. So it's a pretty full, once again, a pretty full meeting. And then we'll look at the calendar to see when we can schedule the, the commercial design standards for a joint meeting, but it will not be on the 21st. It will be sometime in October.
Thank you. Is there anything else anyone would like to add? Or question? It's only 10 to 8. If we go home, if we go home this early, people are going to start to wonder why.
We have a closed meeting.
There is a closed meeting coming up?
Yep, right now, right here.
What? What, what page, man?
Got to add it.
I'm sorry. Oh, I gotta flip it over. All right. So then we'll close this meeting, having read the announcements. And we'll continue with a closed meeting. This meeting is adjourned?
Oh, you got to read the statute.
Got to read the, in the red there.
So I'll make a motion to approve. Nope, 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 nope.
The red, closed meeting.
Number 18, Camp 3 in Kettle River. Right-of-way discussion, this will be a closed meeting under the Minnesota Statutes 13D.05, subdivision 3C.3, to develop and consider offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property. And the handout is at the meeting.
Okay, so I'm going to be stopping the Zoom meeting now, so thanks for participating.